Call to orders, City of Cannon Falls, City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 6th, 2024. If I could get a roll call, please.
Gesmi.
Here.
Groot.
Here.
Jepson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could get an approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Lundell.
Second.
Second from Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We're going to skip public input. Nobody signed up for that here tonight. That leads us straight to number six, our public hearing. The Resolution 2737 certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes. So, we will open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on unpaid utility charges collected by taxes? Going once, going twice, third and final call. Public hearing is closed. Council discussion, Resolution 2737.
Just...
Hearing, yep.
One que... Is it, is it through the end of 2025, not 24? Okay.
I would take a motion to approve certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected by taxes.
So moved.
Motion by Jepson.
I'll second.
Second by Groot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Gets us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. Item A, just incorrect claims, the accounting period ending on January 31st, 2024. B, meeting minutes for January 16th, 2024, City Council. C, second reading and adoption of ordinance 402 and summary of publication and ordinance amending the city code Title III relating to fees, charges, and rates. Item D, Resolution 2734, adopting presidential nomination, primary election judges for 2024 and setting hourly wages. Item E, Resolution 2735, accepting a monetary donation of $700 from the Henkel Foundation to the library. Item F, approve 2024 contracted police service rates. Item G, approve hire of unscheduled part-time employee to the ambulance. And item H, approve March 5th, 2024, City Council meeting cancellation. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
I'm going to pull down C, Matt.
Pull down C. That will become item C for council business. The fees and charges. Is there anything else the council would like pulled down? Hearing none, I would seek a passing of the, or a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Johnson?
Second.
Second from Groot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That gets us to council business. Item A tonight, disposal of defibrillators. Chief McCormick, if you'd like to speak on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the Police Department received new AEDs and we have repurposed three of our AEDs. One is going to go here into chambers, and then two are going to go into public works facilities. We still have three of the units. However, today when I was parsing them out to where they were going, I discovered that one is not passing. Putting the batteries in, it would turn green, and then it would turn red. So, I do not know if it's bad pads or a bad unit. So, right at the moment, we have three. Two I know are functional. And so, what I'm looking for, for console, is what do you want to do to dispose of them? They're just sitting around in my office. And now that we've figured out what could be used within the city, we still have something to get rid of. The vendor that provided us the AEDs, we'll take them back, refurbish them, and then move them out to organizations, nonprofits. The other option would be dispersing it here, within the city, to nonprofits or churches. And the third would be just sending them to an e-recycler for recovery disposal that way. If the council wants to disperse them locally, just give me some guidance so I don't have somebody complaining that, well, I wanted one, but I didn't get it. So, if it's, you know, what ranking you would want to do as far as distributing it within organizations?
Good discussion for the council. I'm leaning towards keeping it in the community, like you said, to nonprofit organizations. The only thing I can come up with is allow a time period of them to show interest, and then once we get all the groups, maybe have the Police Commission sit down and look at who's interested and try to divvy them up. I don't know if we have a way to, I mean, if it's just going to be a lottery style of if they want to put their name in the hat, or...
There's three, but only two are functioning at the moment. I'm going to have to do some more troubleshooting on the third one to see if it can move back to life.
My husband thought to put new pads on it.
Pardon?
My husband thought to put new pads on it.
Yep, that's the next thing I'm going to try.
He uses them, so he might know.
I don't know, I mean, I'd hate to say, you know, write a letter and then we decide. Lottery of, if people are interested, if there's three, give them all away?
I know there's one church that's interested at the moment. There might be others.
Yeah.
They contact us before knowing that we were going to be doing this.
Anything from the council? Direction for what to do with the AEDs?
I think it'd be nice to keep them local, donate it to...
Agreed.
Somewhere in town that would like them.
How do you guys feel about, what, a two-week or a month-long period to see if people are showing interest?
I think, you know, given the fact that it wouldn't even make the beacon until next week, probably a three to four week would be more appropriate.
Four weeks?
And then, you know, with that, the caveat that if we get no takers, you know, then we would dispose of them in whatever way you would, you know, your alternate plan would be, we get three requests, we've got three that are working, then we don't need to worry about it.
Yep.
We get multiple requests and we're routed into the Police Commission. We get one request and no others, then what do you want done with the other ones?
Yep, gives you one and then back to the company that can refurbish.
Okay.
Does that work for the council?
Yep.
With that said, I could take a motion to approve keeping the AEDs local to those interested in a four-week period, and if not, the rest of what Police, Chief McCormick had stated.
So moved.
Motion from Lisa. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Diane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That brings us to Resolution 2736, approving plans and specifications for ordering advertisement for bids for the 72nd Avenue Way Improvement Project. And Bill isn't here tonight, but I see we got representation from WHKS if you'd like to take this one?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, Bill Angerman was not available to be here tonight, so I'm Darren Sicking from WHKS. So, back in November, the council had voted to proceed with the 72nd Avenue Way project, so we have completed those plans. And so, what we're requesting, and city staff's requesting from the council, is to pass the resolution approving the plans and then going out for an advertisement for bids. So, this would be an advertisement that appears in the local newspaper, and then it would also be posted online, and then contractors would be able to see it, and then obviously bid on it. So, we would be taking bids on March 13th and then coming to the March 19th meeting to present those bids. And then at that meeting, you would be looking to set your assessment amounts, and then after that, following another meeting, about another month later, you'd have your assessment hearing. And so, that's kind of the process going forward. So, but for tonight, we're just requesting that city, or City Council act on the resolution approving the plans and advertising for bids.
Any questions for Darren from the council?
This, the cover letter kind of looks like, you know, project will be assessed to the adjacent benefiting properties, but we still take into consideration our whole prior conversation on how we were going to do that more fairly.
Yeah, I believe so.
Correct, correct. So, what was discussed at the council workshop, we will come back at that March 19th meeting and apply that discussion to the assessment, and then you would then be able to act on it or make changes if you wanted to at that 19th meeting.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd seek a motion to approve Resolution 2736.
So moved.
Motion from Gesmi.
Second.
Second from Jepson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Brings us to item C, the second reading and adoption of ordinance 402, the summary of publication and ordinance amending the city code for related fees and charges and rates.
So, I, when Derek brought this up last week, about the on-sale liquor license, I kind of did some poking around town. And between, on average, these bars are paying like $15,000 in property taxes, $600 to $700 in water bills a month. I was just thinking, like Derek said, if we could drop, drop their permit fees down, at least it's helping them out a little bit.
Like, January's a tough time of year.
Yeah, real tough.
For businesses, too.
Is that possible, Neil, to do stuff like that? Okay.
I wouldn't, I would recommend that you adopt this ordinance, the second reading.
Okay.
Simply because of water bills, and then we can work on that after the fact, like we talked about at the last meeting. We got the sexual-oriented business fees to discuss and the liquor license, and I have done some research on what the area towns have got for their fees. So, I did put it on the finance agenda for next Monday.
Okay.
And, but I would recommend approving these fees, and then we can work on lowering the ones that you want to talk about. But, yeah, yeah. So, I'd hate to, it would jeopardize another month's worth of water bills that we wouldn't get our increase on.
Gotcha. Okay.
So...
All right. Any other questions? Yeah. Go ahead, Diane.
Looking at both our sewer charges and water charges, we really do seem to overexceed when it comes to comparison to Zumbroda Pine Island and Northfield. And Northfield normally seems to be way ahead of us on the fee structure, except when it comes to water and sewer. We're getting hit with a lot, and I guess I would still like us to come more in conformity with some of the surrounding communities unless, as I say, I, I know, you know, I look at my water, water sewer, storm sewer bill, and, you know, it's just, to me, seems incredibly high. And now I look at what Zumbroda Pine Island and Northfield people are paying, and I'm thinking, yeah, it is high. Perhaps not for the first 400 cubic feet, but once you go past that, it just... So, if we're looking at on-sale liquor fees, I would also like us to revisit water charges, and, you know, and again, our hookup fees are, they're more than the surrounding communities. So, I think, you know, if we want people, we want businesses to come to Cannon Falls and stay in Cannon Falls, we need to keep our fees, especially, in line with surrounding communities. That was all. And as I say, I wouldn't take these figures to be 100% accurate. I, you know, I sometimes transpose numbers or do that, but I, you know, you can get all that information off all those cities' websites.
Would this also be something that we could address, not that's included in the rates and fees and all those things?
And actually, I'm thinking, in addition to finance, could we have a work session on this whole thing? So that more than just finance?
Is the council interested in having a work session about the water bills?
Well, and the restaurant fees and...
Or the...
I don't know how everybody else feels, if nobody else wants to.
The fees we're voting on soon, isn't the only major change, the water? So, why are we, if we're going to vote this in tonight, then we're going to have another meeting to talk about water again? No?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, didn't we just have a meeting to approve these 1%, whatever it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the second reading.
This is the second. Correct, correct.
I didn't like it the first time around.
And... And you guys know that we approved these rates in the budget, so, got to be a little careful. We're a little after the fact here.
Right. I think what I hear is, we already approved that we're going to increase these fees. We've talked about it several times, right? I agree that I think you just move forward with this. That being said, if we believe that our, we're charging too much in water, then let's talk about that in 2024, right? Maybe that is, that's a work session thing that we need to do. One thing that I would caution is, I, I agree, our water bills, our water is high. I get it in the summer, and even though we have a discount, and I hear it from people all the time. But what I caution people on is when you, when you look at one-to-one comparisons on something like water, you're not looking at the whole picture. What are their, what's their tax rate? Maybe they pay more in taxes, and they pay less in water, and we pay less in taxes and higher in water. So, you just have to be really careful of looking at...
A bigger picture.
A strict comparison, because sometimes that's not, that's not accurate. Now, you know, your whack-and-sack fees, sure, you know, maybe we need to be a little bit more comparable. Again, what are the other fees associated? How are those compared? I don't feel like you can look at just one piece. It's more than that. That's what I would caution.
I'll give you kind of an example of how the ebb and flow of water and sewer rates go between towns. It really depends on a lot. If you've done a sewer upgrade and you've spent millions of dollars, your fees and your water rates, or your sewer charges, are going to go up to make that payment. And all councils, no matter where they're from, don't want to raise water rates, and so they wait, and they wait, and they wait, and they wait. And then when the time comes to do a major upgrade, guess what? You guys seen it here 20 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And your fees hit the roof. People go crazy. Small 3% increments, I've done that my whole career. You usually don't get a lot of repercussion. Jed asked me yesterday, we got a $35,000 heat exchanger, heater, something of the, to put in the sewer plant. We've got to be careful on reducing rates. Inflation is eating us alive. But getting back to the, when you do your upgrades, and I know for example, Zumbroda and, they call it the North Zumbro Regional Facility, they're working on getting a $40 million loan and paying the rest, or whatever the numbers are. I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but their rates are going to go up a lot, because they got to pay for it. They haven't done that recently. They haven't had an upgrade for 25 years. It's coming. So, be a little careful on exactly what Laura said. You don't know what the other towns are up to, and some of them are going to experience some increase in rates simply because they've got to fix their wastewater plants, or build a tower, or tear down a tower, or paint a tower, or fix whatever they've got to fix, drill a well. That stuff all costs money, you know. Just how much did it cost to paint our tower here last year, right? But for some cares money, we'd have to cut that check.
Yeah.
So, we got to be careful as we move forward. You can do a study on it, and you can spend $15,000 to estimate what, what your rate should be, but I think we're pretty close.
Does our rates, or the water, the public works budget, and I should know, I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head, the, what we're charging now includes putting money away so that when we have a $35,000 expense, we can just pay it, or if we have $100,000, we can just pay it versus having to go get a loan or bond or whatever?
Correct. And not only that, I know Steve...
We've been on the other end of that, and it's a lot more fun to be on this end, although, you know, like Neil says, bumping to 3%, you know, comparing to other communities, you know, we're prepared. A lot of them, when they come to that fork in the road, when they got to put up that new plant or something, they're going to say, well, we don't, we don't have any enough fund now, so it's going to be 100% financed or whatever. And you're right, and their, their rates are going to be over the top of ours.
Yep. It leapfrogs.
Yep.
And their time's coming. And whenever they do an upgrade, their rates are going to go up, and they will be higher than ours. So...
Any further discussion?
And it only makes sense.
Absolutely. No. Any further discussion for the second reading of ordinance 402? Then I would seek a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance 402.
So moved.
Motion from Jepson.
Second.
Second from Gesmi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That brings us to reports. Chambers not here. EDA had a meeting, but we were not present. Police Committee, is there anything you'd like to address, Chief?
So, the Police Commission met on the second. The first item on the agenda was cannabis, where the Commission wanted to go from that. The last council meeting, there was a moratorium in front of this body. It did not pass. It ended up at a tie. So, the Police Commission has directed me to move forward with putting together research on regulation side, mirroring our liquor ordinance, structuring with the matrix, that type of thing. I'm also doing research on the license types. The state has, I believe, 16 license types. And so, we're going to look at that, work with Zach relative to zoning side, where they could be located, et cetera. So, it's, it's much more of a issues than just an enforcement, you know, it's licensing, it's enforcement, it's zoning, it's all this other stuff. So, it'll be coming back to the Police Commission as some of that material research gets put together, and then they'll give further direction on where we should go, and then Zach and I will work on, on those topics. The second agenda item was just an update. Officer Fox is in final stage of field training. It's called shadow phase. We expect that probably by the second, third of the month, he will be out and then onto his own. So, that update was provided. I think that was pretty much it. The short meeting, people had to get back to other things.
Thank you, Chief.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Jed, anything from you?
Um, nothing at this time.
All right. Anything else from our engineers?
Um, yep. So, just wanted to kind of give a council update. We had our pre-construction meeting on the 2024 street project. We met with city staff and the contractor met today here at City Hall, kind of went through the items. So, with the nice warm weather, everyone thinks they can get started. So, their, their first thought is to start doing some tree clearing, kind of where the city pond site is, with further, once weather officially becomes spring, then they'll start doing utility work. But as of right now, it'll be just clearing and grubbing. So, other than that, so, nothing else on engineering side.
Thank you. Chief, anything else you'd like to add?
Nope.
Sarah? Neil? All right. Council members, we'll start over here. Derek?
Diane?
I think the bomber dance team is going to, what, conference now, sectional, whatever is called.
Whatever's next.
Yes. So, good luck to them this Saturday.
Yeah, awesome. Steve?
Not seen.
Nothing, I'm good.
All right. Lisa?
Is there an update on the terrace at all? Kind of forgot about them.
Uh, so the...
I saw the blue tarp is gone. That helps.
Owner of the terrace, Lieutenant Berg was able to finally reach, reach him. He indicated that he was going to be coming to town, and he had hired a contractor to do work. We know that the contractor was working. They were collecting the tarps, getting them off of the sides of the buildings, the trubs, that type of thing, boarded up the broken windows. I know that the owner was going to be here, I believe it was a Tuesday, if I can't, I can't remember exactly what day. I can't, I can't remember exactly what day. But he never made contact with us, but Public Works, as well as my officers, noticed a vehicle that was out in front of it. So, at the moment, you know, it seems to have been addressed. I did update the city attorney, took updated photos, provided that to our city attorney. Should problems develop in the future, we'll have references of where we were at.
Okay. Well, good.
All right. Bryant, anything you've got?
Nothing.
All right. Nothing too exciting. Next Wednesday morning, I'll do the State of the City with the Chamber breakfast. And then, other than that, thank you for holding down the fort while I was gone last meeting. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Johnson.
Second.
Second from Laura. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.